Good evening, I'm going to bring the May twenty seventh city council meeting to order. Is there a motion on tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to that person, tonight's agenda.
Motion made by Tim, is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion second by Randy, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote, please?
Mayor Boss.
Aye.
Councilmember Pousance.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Yeah, motion passes. First item on tonight's agenda is our monthly report from Anoka County Sheriff's. Good evening, Shelley.
Good evening. Hopefully we'll be doing this live in person soon. But until then, I report for April. DWI, there were four DWI arrests for the month. Two of the arrests involve single vehicle incidents where they left the roadway and were in the ditch. One of the incidents, the driver struck a tree after losing control on the roadway. Both drivers showed signs of impairment, failed field sobriety tests, and failed the breath test. There were no injuries associated with these accidents. One arrest was the result of poor driving conduct witnessed by a deputy. The last incident involved an ATV that was driving recklessly in a field, then crossed Highway sixty-five, causing multiple vehicles to slam on their brakes in order to avoid a collision. Deputy Schleisiger stopped his squad in the southbound lanes of traffic with emergency lights activated. The ATV was coming straight at the side of the squad, then turned north and went around the squad and went into a trailer park. The ATV continued accelerating away as the squad began to follow. A short time later, another deputy located two people in the area on foot. Deputy Schleisiger was able to identify the male as the driver of the ATV. The male appeared to be under the influence and failed field sobriety tests. The male was arrested and transported to jail. He did take a breath test, which showed results of a point one seven blood alcohol content. Possessed stolen property. A traffic stop was conducted on a truck pulling a trailer which had come out of a bank's parking lot with no lights on at twelve nineteen AM. The truck did not have any license plates displayed. The trailer appeared to have a VIN number which had been altered and was not registered anywhere in the United States. The side door of the trailer also looked to have the locking mechanism drilled out and the door was swinging back and forth. The male suspect advised he was taking the trailer to his storage unit and his GPS went out. He stated he had pulled into the bank's parking lot to reset it. He claimed the license plates were stolen off his truck a week ago. As for the trailer, he claimed he had purchased the trailer a week ago in Hudson, Wisconsin, at a Walmart parking lot from a male named John, who was selling it for a construction company. He advised he did have a bill of sale for the trailer, but it was at his residence. He also claimed that the damage to the door had been done by kids in his neighborhood. The trailer was towed from the scene for further investigation. Deputy Arcan did receive an email with a bill of sale for the, for a trailer that evening. The company name on the bill of sale did not yield any results when a Google search was done. The address was not valid, nor was the phone number in service. Trailer did have a sticker on it for Town and Country Trailer Sales in Burnsville. Contact was made with Burnsville PD, who confirmed that they had taken a stolen report on this type of trailer one week prior. During a follow-up investigation of the trailer, it was confirmed to be stolen from Burnsville. Investigator Nelson conducted a search warrant at a storage facility where the suspect had several other trailers stowed. The male suspect happened to arrive at the storage facility and three other trailers were confirmed stolen that he had in his storage area. The male was transported to jail. So that's really kind of all the, you know, big things that happened over the month, which not much. However, calls for service in April were up from March. We had four hundred and ninety-five calls for service in April compared to three hundred and thirty-one in March. So you can see there's trending upwards, which is normal with, with the weather getting better. And now that people are at home for the most part, obviously, they might be seeing more things, calling more things in than we might have otherwise. But the calls for service this year compared to last year are a bit lower. With so many people at home, we are seeing an increase in suspicious vehicle type calls. We encourage people to call when they see any type of suspicious activity, because we would rather respond and have it be nothing than, you know, have it be something and, and the neighbor didn't want to call or didn't want to bother us. That's what we're there for. Theft numbers have increased over March, but are still fairly low. As the weather gets warmer, we tend to see a rise in these types of crimes. Cars being broken into that are parked in driveways overnight or parked at local parks. We see a great increase in those kinds of things. So just reminder, if you are leaving your vehicle outside or you are going to a park or anywhere, don't leave any kind of valuables within view of looking in your windows, because you will most likely come back to a car that's been broken into and your valuables will be gone. We also had a few calls of an email people had received where the emailer was demanding Bitcoin in exchange for not sending information out about the person. Thankfully, the recipients realized that this was a scam and did not do anything other than make the reports with us. So nobody ended up out any money, although I'm not really sure how you purchase Bitcoin. So that's my report for the month.
Okay, thanks Shelley. Any questions for Shelley tonight? All right, looks like you're off easy tonight.
Looks like so. Have all, all of you have a good, safe night and stay well.
Thanks Shelley. On to Department Monthly Report, Chief of Sheriff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The month of April, we saw fifty-eight calls. Thirty-four of those were medical related. Ten of those were grass fires. And one of those grass fires was actually a mutual aid guy, Sandy. We had four possible illegal burning calls, five car accidents, and we had two fires, structure fires, building fires. One was a manufactured house and one was a mutual aid to another city. As of the end of the month of April, we trailed two thousand and nineteen by about nine calls. Although at this time, year to date, we're right even with last year's calls. One important note concerns the DNR. They have lifted the burning restrictions and people are able to get burning permits now. And remember, burning permits are for burning from six o'clock at night until eight o'clock in the morning. And it's for what we call pile burning, and that would be three branches and things like that. Now that's, Mayor, is different than recreational fires. Recreational fires, you don't need a burning permit, but you have to remember what a recreational fire is. And we talk about this almost every month. That's a three-foot by three-foot fire, not any higher than three feet. You're not burning yard waste in it, and it's being monitored by the property owner or resident, and they have a hose close by so they can put it out. Any questions, Mayor, Council?
Anything for Chief tonight? I see not.
Okay. One other thing is to bring you up to, up to speed on the two thousand and twenty Safer Grant, which is a FEMA, FEMA grant. I did research into it, and this would not, Safer Grant would not qualify for our possible full-time inspector's job. Although it is our, also the duty crew. Number one, Safer Grant is for full-time staff. So with the duty crew, we could not use the job share concept to break that down into part-time. Number three, it's not for code compliance staff. What it is for is for response staff. So we'll have to wait and see how it comes out in two thousand and twenty-one and possibly take the opportunity to apply for it at that time.
Okay. Questions? So Mark and Jack, this, this will have a direct effect on budgeting for next year, correct, in terms of the staff position?
Yes.
Jack, you're mute.
We do not have those funds built into the budget, so we're still where we were. If we had those funds built into the budget, then that would represent a decrease on what we preliminarily discussed.
Okay, so, so obviously something a lot to discuss at the Finance Committee again.
Yes.
Okay. For any, any other questions, Councilmembers? All right, Mark, thank you. Have a safe night. On to consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to that, tonight's consent agenda.
Motion made by Tim, is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Suzanne. Any discussion?
I'd like to pull item E, please.
Is it Edward?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Then to the motion, Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote, please?
As to the balance, Mayor Boss.
Aye.
Councilmember Pousance.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning.
Aye.
And Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
That motion passes. Suzanne, item E.
Item E, I'm not understanding this. I have some questions regarding it. Why are we doing it? Is this a renewal? It, it didn't appear to be a renewal. Is there, what's the benefit? Is there a cost? And what is this changing to what we are doing right, the way things are right now? And finally, why is it for five years? I think that's, I, I think it should just be for a year, because I don't like to, I tried to read it and I can understand a lot of what they were trying to say with subscriber this and East Bethel them. It was just very confusing.
Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Urkel, this is a pretty standard document. We prosecuted for, I think, fourteen or fifteen different cities. We go through this process where you need to do this on some sort of frequent basis. I need to get it approved, and it's, it just allows us to share information with other agencies and to obtain information. I don't know what the cost is. I don't have that page printed out, maybe Jack's aware of that. But it, it may well be something that we discover as part of our prosecution services. But, but it is necessary for basically the, the Anoka County Sheriff's Department to access those reports and to combine those with other reports and share those reports with opposing council or public defenders.
But why now? I mean, this is, why, why haven't we been doing this in the past? I guess I don't understand why we're, we're, we've got a, something brand new and we already have contracts with everybody.
Suzanne, this, this was last approved in two thousand and fifteen, and Mr. Sweeney was correct. This is included in their prosecution fee services. This has to be renewed every five years, and it's an agreement with the state to access their record.
So it is a renewal, because I didn't see renewal on there, so I thought it was brand new.
No, this, this is a renewal, but the last time it was renewed was in two thousand and fifteen.
All right, and there's no privacy issues, because there is a section in there that said if it's a state government, it goes to, the privacy levels are different than if it's a private citizen. So I, that, that kind of concerned me a little bit.
Yeah. Maybe Jack knows best, but, you know, I've been prosecuting for twenty-five years. I think this, this type of information sharing has only been around maybe the last fifteen years. And so, obviously, it's approved, the state's involved, the cities are involved, the BCA, I think, sometimes even gets involved. So it's just, it's a process of renewing it. And if, for example, we were to get a new city, let's say we started prosecuting for somebody else, we would have to redo this agreement with that city as well. So it's, it's partly the prosecutor's office, partly the city, partly the state. And it's, it's just a state requirement. The state comes out, they do audits, they come out to our office, they make sure we're using the computers properly, that we've got proper security, that our people are all fingerprinted. So, so there's kind of a lot that goes into this whole thing.
Okay, I'm satisfied. Thank you. I can make a, a motion to approve item E on the consent agenda.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Tim, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote, please?
Mayor Boss.
Aye.
Councilmember Pousance.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
And then motion passes. On to new business, on to department reports. On Jack.
Item seven E one, Anoka Conservation District Berg Rain Garden Project at four four one seven Channel Lane. The Anoka Conservation District is requesting approval from the City of East Bethel for a potential rain garden project that would be funded through grants received by the Sunrise River WMO for water quality improvements on Coon Lake. The project would include the construction of a rain garden and underground drain tower at the existing storm drain location near the intersection of Sportsman Road and Channel Lane. The upstream eight-acre drainage basin collects runoff at this point and drains this water into Coon Lake. The rain garden is designed to gather and provide water infiltration for the first flush of storm water before it's discharged into the lake. On an annual basis, the modeled rain garden should remove approximately one point two pounds of total phosphorus and approximately three hundred and seventy-nine pounds of sediment that would otherwise flow directly into the lake. The property owner desires the project and is willing to accept the terms of the conditions of the grant. The draft maintenance agreement includes attachment three and will be signed before the project is installed. The agreement is for a term of ten years and specifies standards for the type of maintenance required by the property owners and penalties for non-compliance. Instruction costs would be funded through the Sunrise River WMO. No funding from the City of East Bethel has been requested. Staff recommends city council consider approval of the Berg Rain Garden Project at four four one seven Channel Lane and waive the city right-of-way permit for the installation of this facility.
I'll make a motion for approval of the Berg Rain, Rain Garden Project at four four one seven Channel Lane and waive the city right-of-way permit fee for the installation of this facility.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Second by Randy, discussion.
Uh, Jack, is this for next year or this year? I thought, because there was another project on Anne Marlane, I thought they were going to get bids in, in July and then do them both next year, or they moved that up?
I think that one is for next year, Tim. This one's for next year.
So my question is, was this something, this wasn't in that budget that we approved for the Sunrise, right? This is something new. Is that correct?
Yeah, th, 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 this is a grant project for grant money that they received and their budget that we approved was for their operational and administrative expenses.
So are, none of the money that East Bethel gives to Sunrise is going to this, is that correct?
Correct. This is all funded through grants that the Sunrise River WMO has received.
Okay, what I, what bothers me is it's for somebody's, it's like, somebody's private property is getting a special grant and so they don't have to pay to put a, what I consider like a pot, a decorative pond in front. And they're on a property. So can somebody correct me on how I'm wrong on that?
Well, I'll, I, I can say directly from experience, ACD installed one rain garden on our property in two thousand and sixteen and then a second one in two thousand and seventeen. The first one was very similar in structure to this project in that it was all grant money. There was a little bit of homeowner expense that was included. And the second rain garden they installed on our property across the street, we, it was more of a, a, a grant share. I think we paid for half of that, so it was a little different. And I, I, I will say that once these gardens get growing, they, they are very aesthetically pleasing. You can drive my, by our place right now and everything's in bloom. But the, the idea behind this is not to create a garden, is to protect the lake. And I'll also tell you from experience that these, these things work. I have to clean, I clean out our sediment trap probably four times a year. And, and I see how much water goes into this and, and is diverted from going into the lake. And it's the first flush that has all the tritus and phosphorus and salt in the spring. All that goes into the rain garden instead of going discharged directly to the lake. We, I'm not sure where the culvert, the, the, where this drainage goes on Channel Lane, but for us, there's culverts about fifty feet away from our rain gardens and, and the rain gardens are protecting that, so. And there's, there's quite a bit of maintenance that the homeowner is going to need to do, a lot, especially the first few years. You know, so it, it is a private public partnership in a way. But in terms of, and ACD will say this too, if you want to talk to them, in terms of impacting your ways to protect the water quality of Coon Lake, these rain gardens are the best investment to make. And they've been trying to get these around the lake and homeowners are hesitant. So I'm, I applaud this homeowner for, for allowing this to be built on their property. Because again, you know, they're going to have to maintain it, so. It is, Suzanne, it is a good thing. It's not just a pretty flower garden, so. Tom, I think you have your end up. Tom? He's muted.
Now and there. I, I'm just going to mention for Suzanne's information, the homeowner is allowing them to put that on their property, and it had removed one point, one point two pounds total phosphorus. Phosphorus is very bad for the water for people. And three hundred and seventy-nine pounds of sulfuric, which that, that benefits everybody that lives on the lake and everybody that lives involved. And it's at low cost to us. So it's all benefit, no detriment. Thank you.
Well, how do they find these homeowners? Do they go knocking on the doors? Or do the homeowners come talking to the city saying, hey, I'd like this? And the grant money, is that, where did they get the grant money? I'm just thinking it's still, in the end, it's still taxpayer money, unless somebody, some private person has donated it.
Tim, it's, it's from the DNR, isn't it, the grant ultimately?
Well, yeah, yeah, it comes from them, yeah, right.
You know, and, 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 you know, these, these can't be placed just anywhere. They are strategic. Back in twenty, I think twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen, the Anoka Conservation District contacted quite a few homeowners around Coon Lake and had a meeting at, at Coon Lake Beach Community Center. And there was probably maybe thirty people there. And just to, it was an information session for, for the homeowners of properties that they identified as, as candidates for these rain gardens. And in the end, they had, I think, four, four good candidates, and only two of the property owners were, were interested. It was, it was our, my wife and I, and then also the Coon Lake Community Center also had a rain garden installed on their property. So they just can't be placed anywhere. They're, they're placed where technically it's going to provide that reduction of pollution to the lake. You know, like in my case, it's a very large drainage basin along East Front Boulevard. And again, right before the culvert, so these rain gardens intercept all that sediment that would have gone into the lake, all of, you know, phosphorus would have gone into the lake, and it, it makes impact. And, and obviously, this is one of those locations around the lake, so. So they're, again, they're not, it can't be placed just anywhere.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything else to say.
Okay. Uh, any, any other discussion on this item? You see none. Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote, please?
Mayor Boss.
Aye.
Councilmember Pousance.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning.
Tom, you're muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
I'm voting nay, just because I, I do think it might be a good idea, but I need to learn more about this before I'm going to ruin my conscience and vote for something I don't understand. So thank you, sorry.
Suzanne, you're more than welcome to come over someday and I'll, I'll show it to you, right? We can talk about it. Okay, great. So with that, the motion does pass. Jack?
Item seven G one, June first, two thousand and twenty work meeting. Our monthly work meeting is scheduled for June first, two thousand and twenty at seven PM. Items recommended for council discussion or review could include, may not be limited to the following. Potential fee reimbursements for COVID-nineteen business closures for businesses holding liquor licenses, return to work, city hall reopening plan discussion, and the two thousand and twenty-one roads capital improvement plan, or other items as requested by council. Staff recommends that council set the topics listed above for the June first, two thousand and twenty work meeting agenda.
Call for approval of the topics identified for the June first, two thousand and twenty work meeting. That's for June first at seven PM.
A motion made by Tom, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Suzanne, discussion.
I, I'd like to add something. I am wondering if we could do what Anoka County did and delay some of those, these business taxes that were closed until after they're fully opened? If we could discuss that?
Taxes or fees?
I don't know, taxes, fees, what, what they have to pay, their liquor fee, license fee, all the fees that, what they have to pay the city. Because Anoka County delayed their taxes, right? They did a resolution to, yes, they did. They just did it this, this week. At their meeting, they delayed taxes for all businesses that paid quarterly taxes until July fifteenth, which I thought might be too soon, but I thought maybe we could discuss that. um, I thought maybe we could discuss that. What they pay us, businesses.
Suzanne, are you talking about the ordinance that the county passed yesterday?
Um, yeah, I actually printed it out here somewhere. It might have been yesterday, yeah. I can't, last Sunday, day of the week it is now because of Monday, but, yeah. I believe so. But just, just bring it up for discussion. Nothing has to happen. That's all I have.
If you like, you can make it a motion to amend, add it to the agenda.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend the topics for the June work meeting to include the, um, fees that businesses pay.
Is there a second to that motion? I'll second that motion. Uh, discussion. Okay, here it comes.
I do have something to say.
I'm sorry, Randy, go ahead.
I, I have no problems putting on the agenda. I'm just, I'm not sure quite what we have to offer. I mean, basically the only thing that we have is um, property taxes and then, um, no licenses per, per business. We have discussed a few of those. And I'm not so sure how much help we could be in, in that particular venue. Um, but again, I don't mind putting it on the agenda and we'd have, having that discussion. Thanks.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, uh, to the motion to amend, Pat, could you take roll call vote, please?
Yes, Your Honor, Mayor Boss?
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning?
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel?
Aye.
Okay, the motion to amend, uh, passes. Now back to the original motion as amended. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, Pat, could you take roll call vote, please?
Mayor Boss?
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning?
Aye.
And Councilmember Urkel?
Aye.
Okay, the motion as amended does pass. Uh, item two, Jack?
Um, seven G two, city hall reopening discussion. Governor Walz issued executive order twenty dash fifty-six on May thirteenth, two thousand twenty to address reopening Minnesota's economy during the COVID nineteen peacetime emergency. Minnesota had been under a statewide stay-at-home order that ended after fifty-one days on May eighteenth, two thousand twenty, allowing certain businesses to reopen with social distance practices in place, but continuing the limitation of groups and public gatherings to no more than ten people. Depending on Governor Walz's potential easement of restrictions of the operation of non-critical businesses and public gatherings of no more than ten persons, which is anticipated by no later than May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty, council may wish to begin discussions regarding a scheduled reopen city hall for business-facing activities. In a survey of our surrounding cities, opening of city halls scheduled or as heard as follows. City of St. Francis opened on May the eighteenth, City of Oak Grove on May twenty-first, City of Assani on May twenty-sixth. City of Cambridge and the City of Spring Lake Park are tentatively scheduled to open on June the first. And the City of Blaine, the City of Ham Lake, and the City of East Bethel still remain closed at this time. In addition to reopening city hall, there's a matter of scheduling those staff working remotely to return to the office. It may be necessary to retain some staff in work-at-home status if they are in key backup positions or if there are other reasons to continue this assignment. There are other numerous considerations relating to this subject. This item will be needed to discuss more, given more attention at the June first, twenty twenty work meeting. At this time, staff recommends that council consider a general discussion of the schedule for return to work and city hall reopening plan and provide staff with any additional direction for the June first, twenty twenty work meeting.
Well, it, um, I would be, I would suggest that we just discuss these separately, cause I think they are kind of two separate issues. On, on the return to work aspect of it, um, the, the governor's order still, still recommends or requires, uh, that if you can work at home, you do work at home. So I, I, you know, so I'm not sure if, if, if calling it a, a return to work plan, um, is, is correct or, or needed at this point. And I think, I think that's related to, um, you know, in terms of, Jack, in terms of your feeling and staff's feeling on, on what positions need to be staffed in the office that, that they physically need to be there for. I mean, is it any different than what we're doing right now?
There, there are, there is one position and possibly another one that would require some more, uh, less remote time and more office time. That's mainly due to the increase in activity in the building department. We want to make sure we handle all of those permits and applications for reviews of permits and get those turned out in a timely fashion.
Cause, eh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think as council, we, we directed who was gonna work at home and who wasn't. That was, that was staff decision, so. So I, and, and that's, that's kind of been how we have been all, how we started this, right? If, if it's a critical need in the office, they're gonna have to work in the office, and if not, they work at home. And, and I, I don't know how that's changed, other than, other than the needs of, of apparently changed, so.
And, and that, that would be what would dictate a recommendation or our, our, our direction to those people to return to work is that the workload has shifted to have them at a presence in the office where they have access to other paper files that we have, and also to relieve some of the extra things that staff in the office are having to do because of the increasing cost.
Okay. Hey, other council members here, chime in, please, but I, I don't know if that's a council decision as much as it is a staff decision on, on who works in the office, who doesn't.
That, that's all, my understanding, that's the city administrator is the office manager. And, uh, we go to the city administrator to discuss and what might, might obtain to, um, staff.
Okay, Randy?
Um, I, you know, I agree with that. I mean, I, I think, you know, the city administrator is the one who should be making most of these decisions. I think the only thing that we should consider is, is that, um, you know, we do direct the, the administrator as to how he, how he functions. And, and I think in this particular case, I think one of the, the, the biggest questions confronting us is, do we continue to do all of the permitting and, and whatnot as a remote, uh, situation, or whether or not we should be opening up city hall for some of those, uh, coming into the office meetings? As well as part of, you know, the governor's, uh, declaration is to, um, actually come up with a plan that will keep everybody safe, which is, you know, how are we gonna, how many people are we gonna allow in the building? How many people are gonna, um, how far away do we have to keep people away? What kind of, you know, wiping down do we have to do after somebody walks in the door, so? Um, I don't, I don't have a problem with leaving most of that up to Jack. I really don't. I think the, the biggest question for us is, is it time to, instead of doing everything remotely, start working towards, you know, opening up the building where if somebody needs to come in, then they can come in?
I think, um, you know, I, I think what's, we can let, well, let's shift our discussion over to opening up city hall to the public. Is that, that in a way may, may kind of dictate what we do on staffing level. The, the trend, the trend is, oh, you know, for, for a lot of cities is, is open up city hall again. We have, um, you know, I'm not sure if any of you have been in city hall, but, uh, there's been, uh, there's plexiglass dividers, actually very, I think, almost too effective plexiglass dividers in front of both windows. Um, so there's protective measures that have been in place. E- even though we closed the hall, we, we, we did this anyway. So I think that's there. I mean, tonight in our packet, we have, uh, the, the draft, uh, readiness plan that, that staff has put together too. But I, I think we have some of that in place now. So I think, you know, to, to open up city hall, I think is, is probably a positive step.
I agree with you, Mayor, and I think it should be up to Jack. I think he has, um, immediate understanding of what the needs are and the safety, and I think he can handle it, honestly.
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with, uh, with everyone there, right? You know, Jack, as long as the phones are getting answered, the permits are getting out, and, uh, you know, you're happy with everything being done, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you can make the call. You can, you know, up to you.
Well, we're, we're, we're starting to struggle with some of that now, and if things continue, we'll be back to essentially normal. In some cases, we're ahead of normal where we were with permits. Uh, I was just looking for some direction on this and looking to further refine this discussion at the work meeting. I just wanted to bring it up as a matter of concern and something we need to be paying attention to. Uh, but I think probably this deserves a longer discussion at the work meeting, especially the reopening of city hall.
Well, is, is, is there anyone opposed right now to opening city hall? Uh, I, I, I seem to feel like everyone, it's a move we need to make.
Well, I think.
Randy?
Uh, I just, I just think that, you know, when we're talking about opening city hall, I mean, there's, you know, multiple different levels of opening up city hall, which is, you know, allowing Jack to allow people to come in to the windows to do some of the, you know, the business critical, um, items that are being taken care of. Um, but, you know, there's gonna be a larger question, you know, as to bringing everyone back and not only bringing everyone back, but, you know, restarting our meetings in the chambers. Um, and then allowing the public to come back and, and view those things. So I think, you know, um, for the moment, um, we're only talking about, you know, allowing Jack to open it up for those business critical, um, items rather than, you know, opening up the entire city hall for meetings and so forth a- at this time.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think the meetings, just as we're doing right now, uh, are gonna be virtual for quite a while. Um, cause this is also part of, it, you know, if you can work at home. I mean, we, we're obviously able to function uh, on, on, uh, conducting these meetings remotely. And, and so that needs, you know, that will need to continue, so. But, you know, I, I'm okay with discussing this on Monday at work meeting. Um, but I, I think as, we, we need to come up with a date. A target date to open city hall. To- Tom, you have something?
Uh, yes, please. Um, when we have these discussions, it seems it would be mindful to remember we are a governing body, not an administrative body. And the administration of the city belongs to the city administrator. Everything else falls under him and we give direction and make decisions that affect the city. As far, I mean, that's, that's the administrator's fault. It's not really much of our business.
Well, Tom, it was, it was council action to close city hall, though.
Yeah, okay, well, then that's, yeah, then we're, we're certainly involved to, uh, as far as the process goes, we think that that's a, that's what we'll decide.
Jack, um, practically, um, if we were open city hall, I mean, I'm not sure what would need to be changed. Um, but what would be like the soonest that we could open the city hall to the public?
I think we need to have a little bit more discussion on what protocols we're gonna follow. That's why I just wanted to touch on this subject briefly tonight, uh, in terms of things that Randy mentioned, cleaning. Uh, in terms of also how we're gonna handle the public-facing business. Uh, once the decision was made, we, we could open city hall as soon as the word got out. I think there's several things that are gonna require a little bit more discussion, probably longer than we have tonight. And I think the work meeting would be the ideal place to hash those out and resolve any issues or questions we may have. And, uh, technically, I think we could put that on if we want to approve it, uh, as the council or just go ahead and, and make the announcement, the city hall is open and have it open by June the eighth or any date after June the eighth.
Um, Tom?
Uh, clarification, that's on me, please. We, uh, I, I recall we, uh, made the motion and the action to, uh, close the city, city hall. And, uh, we did that at effective dates and ending dates. When we get to the ending dates, is there anything further needed?
Uh, actually, our local emergency order is consistent with the state order, which there, there's still state orders out there, so. So our order is still in play.
Okay.
I, I think one of the other considerations to closing or open, opening city hall is what the governor is gonna do with his announcement regarding public gatherings of no more than ten people. And, you know, we're still affected by that, so if we have a city council meeting, uh, this, this isn't, this is going back to this kind of the other stuff. But if we have more than ten people here, it's considered a public gather. Uh, it's related to council meetings, but, uh, I think we should wait to see what the governor says on his next announcement. And then factor that in there, discussion on the work meeting, and we can further, uh, come up with a date that may be realistic to do so.
Well, I, I, and I, I agree, we should talk about this further at work being, but, but again, I, I'm, I don't think anything in this advocates us opening up our council meetings to in-person meetings. Uh, we, we've made, um, provisions when, when we have public, uh, hearings, um, to account for that. And I, I think we're still able to do that, but, um, I mean, the, the, I think that the, the focus on this is opening up city hall for for normal city business during normal business hours, so. But, um, go ahead, Randy.
So, I guess my first question is, is, um, it seems to me that we're going to need to have um, a council action in order to open up city hall even, even in that venue, just because of the orders as they currently stand. Um, if we don't make some kind of a motion this evening to allow Jack that flexibility, our next council meeting is on Monday, June eighth, so June ninth would actually be the soonest that we could possibly open up city hall to the public, um, if we don't take action tonight. Um, and then my next question is, Jack, you know, obviously, you know, in discussions for the city council work meeting, which is on the first, um, how much time after council makes, um, that motion in order to open up city hall, do you require in order to put a plan in place?
We, we have a plan in place to discuss at the work meeting.
And we have a draft plan in our packet tonight, correct?
Correct.
So, um, Pat, in terms of opening up city hall, I mean, it was an action done by council. Uh, if, if we had consensus next Monday at the work meeting, and obviously we can't vote on it, but if there's consensus to open it up, could we not open it up by, by order? Or would it have to wait till a council meeting? Cause it's closed, it's closed under our local emergency order now, so.
Right. So generally speaking, I think it should be, uh, a decision. It, it would be probably better for you guys to vote on it because you're the ones who voted to close it. Uh, but obviously Jack could make a recommendation which you can adopt. Um, as far as your timing question, um, yeah, cause you can't vote on the first, um, you could probably, uh, give him direction to open as he sees fit and then take formal action on the eighth.
Is everyone comfortable?
Um, I guess my recommendation is that we make a motion to grant uh, the city administrator, um, the authority, um, to move forward with opening up the city, um, for discussions at the city council work meeting. Would that be acceptable, Pat?
Yeah, I, I think that. Yeah, I, I think that would help, um, give him that authority now, and then if you need to ratify it later, you can still do that.
Well, if we, if we set the date as the ninth tonight, um, we have a work meeting next week to discuss it, and then we have another council meeting on the eighth that if we need to rescind it for some reason or modify it, then we just don't open, but a- at least we've set a date for it that staff can work on.
That would work as well, Mayor.
Very well. I will make a motion, um, that the city will open its, uh, 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 front office facing, uh, business on June the ninth, um, with the city administrators', um, direction.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Ten seconds discussion. Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote, please?
Mayor Boss?
Aye.
Councilmember Plazan?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning?
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel?
Aye.
Yeah, that motion passes. Um, on the staff report, you got anything more, Jack?
Uh, yes, I've got some good news to report. Uh, we met our annual tonnage requirements for our recycle program for the fifth year in a row this year. Uh, we exceeded their goal by over a hundred tons. Uh, shout out to, uh, Cindy Hilliard and Dallas Gilberg. Uh, they were the real drivers behind this, and they did a heck of a job. I'll, I've also gotten a few requests to see if we could approach the county about seeing if a county compost site could be located somewhere in northern Anoka County. Currently, the compost sites in the county are located at Bunker Hills Regional Park and the other one over at the Worgo Nature Center between Rhino Lakes and Centerville. If you look at the map, there's nothing in between, and it may be something we want to discuss and maybe approach some of our neighboring cities to see if they would support some resolutions to the county to find a compost site that's closer to our rest. Uh, oth- other than that, uh, we do have a lot of requests for opening the, uh, city softball and baseball fields for practice. Uh, that can be done. I sent out the guidelines for that from the Minnesota Department of Health. Uh, SBAA is looking for some direction. Uh, they would like to start doing the practice with the social distancing policies in place recommended by MDH on June the first. And since these were not officially closed, uh, we could request that they give us a copy of their, their policies and how they're going to enforce the social distancing, uh, requirements from the Department of Health. Probably give them direction to go ahead and do that, or we could take it and vote on it at the council and give them direction to start on the second.
We, uh, a- as a city, we, we won't be the ones to enforce that, correct?
That's correct.
So what, what guidance do, are you looking for from council on this?
Well, I, I'm looking for either direction to allow them to begin the practices if they comply with the Minnesota Department of Health's social distancing requirements and the other information that I sent out earlier on organized youth sports activities. In the governor's declaration last week, youth sport activities were permitted open on June the first if they met these requirements. So I'm just doing this as kind of a heads up to get direction and kind of, uh, uh, consensus from council to go ahead and let SBAA begin their practices. There won't be any games. Uh, there will be some further information come out by June the fifteenth on whether or not they can have games. They've been indicated by SBAA that, that there's no games allowed after June fifteenth. They'll cancel that season. But at least this will get them started.
Yeah, because their season almost ends like the week after that.
Yeah.
Um, again, my, my position is we never close the ball fields, so, uh, you know, it's, as, as long as these organizations in, in themselves, they're responsible for their, 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 uh, folks and their association, so. Any else's thoughts?
I'm all for it.
Well, I don't think there's any reluctance from council to have them start using the fields, so.
Okay.
Good.
That's all I have.
Hey, Jack, uh, council reports. Tim?
Um, I've got one thing. Last night, they had the planning commission meeting. Uh, they discussed the site plan and architectural design for the Dollar General for forty-eight, forty-nine Viking Boulevard, and the planning commission voted to approve it seven-zero. That's all I've got.
Randy? Randy, we cannot hear you.
Yes, I have a few items. Thank you, uh, Mayor Boss, for letting me know that my mute was still, still on. So, um, May thirteenth was a, was a rather busy day. Um, Yanoka County, uh, Blaine Airport Commission, uh, met, um, in order to, um, discuss bylaws, elections, their work plan, and, um, aircraft operations and noise complaints. Um, I think, I think the, the, the big change here that, that, um, I'm kind of, um, you know, excited about was the fact that even though we did have a representative, um, from Ed Viori, and I thank him for his service, um, is that it was only a, um, um, kind of a, 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 someone to actually just be there as, as, as a guest. Uh, we never had, uh, voting privileges according to the bylaws of the Yanoka County Fire, uh, Airport Commission, so. Um, with some discussions, uh, last year as to, uh, whether or not we could have that changed, as part of this meeting, we did get that passed, and so therefore, the, um, East Bethel is now a recognized voting member for the Yanoka, uh, Airport Commission, so that was a good thing. Um, they also had elections for officers. Uh, that was, uh, put off because at this time, um, um, it was rather difficult to do this as a virtual meeting, uh, simply because, uh, you know, we had some difficulties actually identifying anyone because a lot of the people didn't know each other, and it was kind of hard to identify who would be a good chair, and nobody seemed to volunteer for that position. Um, that same evening, um, was, um, the, um, Economic Development Authority, um, attending the fiber summit meeting with ACRED, um, um, talking about expanding the fiber broadband within Yanoka County, and, um, I think one of our concerns is, is the lack of high-speed internet in the city, especially in the, um, sixty-five corridor. So this group got together, and there was a lot of discussions about funding and, and, um, you know, collaboration with, with different internet companies in order to bring service to East Bethel. Um, there was definitely a lot of great discussion about that. Um, but we di- we didn't have anything firmly decided at that meeting. I think there's gonna be more discussions to come as to whether or not there's, uh, action items to go forward with that. Um, we also, um, did have a, um, finance committee meeting. Um, we're still kind of, um, finalizing some, some numbers on that, just because, um, there was some items that we didn't have yet, um, so hopefully we'll get those settled, but i- it's still looking forward today as if, um, I think that we're, we're gonna be well in control of our finances coming, uh, this December. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Randy. Suzanne?
Well, yeah, I did, I remember getting the email, thanking everybody for attending, but I couldn't find the email, um, with the link to attend the airport meeting, so I was a little disappointed, but, um, anyways, the only, I guess that's the only thing I have to say, because I really wanted to attend that, and maybe when they, this whole Zoom stuff is over with, my schedule will be more normalized. That's all I have.
Yeah, thanks, Suzanne. Tom? Uh, Tom, you're on mute. I'm sorry.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Um, I have two things. Um, you know, I'm sure everyone's, uh, monitored or heard about, uh, the governor's latest, uh, change in, in, in the stay-at-home. Um, as, as I was watching the governor's news conference last week, um, when he kind of surprised everyone and, 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 uh, announced the plans in terms of the restaurants only being able to open for outdoor seating. Um, I actually called, I actually called Jack when, uh, during, during that, uh, news conference and, and, uh, and we talked about what, uh, the restaurants within our community and, and the powers within our community would need to do if they choose to expand or, or, or open up for outdoor seating, so. Um, I know Jack and Stephanie have been in contact, uh, with our local restaurants to see what their plans are, and it, it, my, my first concern was, you know, what, what impediments they would have in terms of ordinance or, or, or rules in terms of how they can expand and, and what we can do as a city council to either waive or, or, or streamline that so they can, if they do want to implement and, and open up, uh, for outdoor seating, uh, to do what we can as a council to help make that happen. Um, I do know that Smokey has a plan to open up next week with some expanded, uh, outdoor scene, um, and, uh, I'm not sure, Jack, has any, any other of our establishments got back to us in terms of what their plans are?
No, him and Haven is still considering what they're going to do. The other one, we haven't heard anything from them.
Okay, Pat?
Not to interrupt, Mayor, but, uh, Blaine just adopted a, a policy last night on this point by resolution. City staff put together a policy. It's, uh, pretty extensive. It gets into a lot of issues, parking, number of people, uh, no tailgating, uh, no music, those type of things, so maybe that's something that, um, certainly I could send over. Jack would like to take a look at it as we, you know, try to quantify that.
Yeah, I thi- I thi- I think we should. I think that's a good idea. Um, again, I, I don't, I don't necessarily want to put any more restrictions on any of these businesses. You know, it's, it's about, I'm sure all they're trying to do is, is try, I'm sure they're scrambling to figure out how to do this too, you know, and, and I just want to make sure that, you know, uh, like fire code, for example, you know, you know, it's probably worthy to review what they're gonna do. I mean, you can't, you know, if they put up a tent and make it a four-sided tent with only one entrance, well, that, you know, that's problematic, so I, I, but I think these things are small, and I think the extent that we can be proactive and, and, and help, help our, uh, our local businesses open if they want to, uh, that's what I'd like to do, so. And, and, like, I think Smokey's plan, I heard it was June fourth, I think is what I saw on Facebook. And so, I mean, it's, it's gonna be important, you know, to, to see what, what we can do to help them along, so. Any other thoughts on that, council? Okay. Um, the second item I have is, uh, at our last council meeting, uh, we considered, uh, a variance request, um, related to, uh, the headstone design in our, in our c- the three cemeteries that the city manages. And, um, you know, there's, there's a lot, a lot of background discussion on that. Uh, and while, uh, I still agree with our decision, uh, based on the policy that we had in place, uh, I think reflection, I mean, I've had a lot of reflections since then, and, uh, I've visited our, our three cemeteries and, and although I've been there before, uh, it was, it was good to revisit, and the, you know, the, the, the fact that, you know, I, I kind of went back to why, why this policy was put in place as well. And so, you know, the, the cemeteries have a, have a, a, a certain feeling to them. I mean, they're all small, they're all old, and, and for someone I, you know, I've been in the city for half my life, but, you know, there's a lot of people have been here a lot longer. And when you go through a cemetery and you can see some of the names that are there on those headstones, you realize, you know, you recognize a lot of names, a lot of family names, and, and so there's a flavor to our, our cemeteries, and, and thinking back, and I was on council in twenty-twelve when, when the policy, uh, was changed. Um, you know, it was also a time where the city was going through some significant, um, financial issues in terms of trying to cut costs, and, um, although I don't know the, the exact reason why this was proposed, I can certainly see that, I, I know council asked, uh, you know, the city administrator to go back and, uh, go to each department and find out where we can trim costs, and, and so my guess is this is how that came about. And obviously, to, to lower the maintenance costs of our cemeteries if they're all at grade headstones. And, um, just reflecting back on all that, I, 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 I just, you know, I don't think it's worth it, and what I'd like to propose is that staff revises that policy, um, to allow, uh, the above-ground headstones, uh, once again, uh, in, in our three cemeteries. Tim?
Um, Steve, I don't have any problem with it. I just, are, are we gonna get feedback? I don't know how many people have called, you know, since two thousand twelve to, to, to present. I mean, I'm sure there's been quite a few, like, you know, I'm just kind of concerned about the feedback. You know, now you're gonna allow it, and I couldn't do it back then, and, but, uh, you know, whatever, whatever we decide is fine, so.
Yeah, you know, I thought about that too, and, and, and think, Jack, you said there's been like a hundred since then. And, and we don't know how many of that hundred would have wanted an above-ground headstone, because, you know, the, the flat headstones are just more popular right now anyway, so. But if there's anyone that comes back and says we want to put in a different headstone, and now it's allowed, I, I don't see a reason why not to allow it.
No, I don't have any issues with that either.
Tom?
One of the, uh, in our last discussion about this, I had asked who maintains this, and it's the, uh, uh, park board, but it's a temporary help we have in the summertime to make the parks, to make the maintain the, uh, cemeteries, et cetera. And we have them there anyhow, so if they, we whip around the stones, it wouldn't bother me any. And it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of consideration on our part to, uh, try to honor and, and, you know, agree with somebody honoring their deceased.
Uh, it's funny you say that, because when I went around and, and toured the cemeteries, uh, our, uh, maintenance crew is at, uh, East Bethel Cemetery doing just that. They're sprucing up the cemetery, and, and, you know, because Memorial Weekend was coming up, and, and, uh, and, and that's part of it. They're, they're already there. There's already quite a few, uh, above-ground headstones, not so much at East Bethel, but, but our other two. Um, so it's not, it's incremental increase in time, because they have to be there already when it comes down to it, so. Does anyone else have comments, or? So I'd like to direct staff to do this. I'm sorry, Suzanne?
I just was gonna say, I'm glad, um, we're going this route. I think, um, those families deserve it, and I drove by those cemeteries too, and I couldn't understand the rule because they have headstones that are raised that they already have to go around, which, a couple more, they have to work around them anyway.
Randy?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna be the contrarian here. Um, again, I, I, I don't, I don't have a problem, um, with the idea of upright headstones, and, and I do think it's, you know, it's a great way to honor those people that have, you know, preceded us. Um, but going forward, um, many, many places are now going with the flat headstones, and, and the basic reason for that is the time that is spent in order to, to do the upkeep, and while- while, you know, it may not seem like very much to us, you know, right now, and it may seem petty, the truth of the matter is, is that, you know, we are responsible for these graveyards in perpetuity. I mean, it's not like the money that we receive for people purchasing these plots is a continual, you know, money that's coming into the city in order to pay for it. I know this sounds petty, but you know, this also means that going forward, we may find ourselves having to hire someone else permanently in order to do the upkeep for these cemeteries. So that's a cost that if, if you're all willing to do, I am okay with doing that. So. Is this really something that you want to do as a directive at this point, Steve? Or do you maybe want to put this on a work meeting to have a further discussion about?
No, I, 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 I would like to have staff come forward at our next regular council meeting with a revised policy. A redlined revised policy, they'll address this. I mean, it's, it's pretty simple. I mean, it's, it's just removing, I think, a couple of lines. And, you know, and Jack and I talked about this a few times, and I don't know if you found out anything more, but we talked about how, how, how did the city come about owning three cemeteries? And my best recollection, and I think Jack's too, he can chime in, is, is that at, at some point in time, long before any of us, that these were private cemeteries that had fallen into, you know, great disrepair and just weren't maintained at all. And, and then from what I understand, the city took them over at some point. And, and, and maybe there's, maybe there's a citizen watches meeting tonight that, that can shed some light on, it'd be great. But here nor there, you're right in that we, you know, we're responsible, we own these three cemeteries now and, 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 you know, we, we will have a commitment to maintain these. And, and although, you know, that may be there, and although we may have to figure out some staffing in the long term, we're already, the point is, we're already doing it. And, you know, in quite, you know, both, two of the, two of the cemeteries are predominantly above ground headstones already. So. So I, I would like to direct staff to bring this to the next, the June 8th council meeting as, as a policy change.
No objection.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
We'll have that on the next agenda.
Okay, and present it as redline if you can. And, and if we do here, if we do find anything more about the history on, on how we acquired these, I think it'd be interesting, be interesting history lesson at least. So.
I've, I've had a few discussions and I'll brief everybody on that at the next meeting.
Okay, great. And that is all I have for tonight. So Mr. Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the benefit of the public and the record, or anyone who's watching here tonight. The council is about to go into a closed session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. Specifically what they'll be talking about in this closed session relates to negotiation strategy and options within that. The council will come back into open session at the conclusion of the closed session. And I believe you'll be able to either stay on or log back in here whenever that occurs and announce what decisions, if any, were made during that closed session. With that, if we could get a motion to go into a closed session.
I'll make a motion to go, to go into closed sessions for the city attorney comments.
Motion made by Tim, second by Suzanne. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote, please?
I will do so. Mayor boss?
Aye.
Councilmember Blazant?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning?
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel?
Aye.
Aye. So this goes, a motion passes, so we go into closed session. Council members log out of this meeting. And Jack had sent out another invite for the closed session. And then when we're done a closed session, we will re-enter this regular council meeting. So, is everyone clear? All right. We'll see you in the next meeting. Hey, Tom, you know you gotta log off, right? You need to close the window. We gotta go to a different meeting. You're on mute.
Do I close the line, leave the meeting?
Yeah, you have to leave this meeting and go to the next one.
Thank you.